Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and it's starting to rain and I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 15th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. We've got a lot to do tonight because we are the Fourth of July and so we're gonna start immediately, but welcome to everyone who's here and everyone that's watching on TV. We don't mind him, leave him there. The, I'd like to open, if we could, please, item A, prayer by Councilman Walter Kimble, afterwards, if you'd please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag, okay?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on this elected body, our friends in the audience and on television. We also thank you, Lord, for blessing our country, for just having us pass our 238th year at a time when so many from so many other lands wish to become Americans. We ask your blessing on the decisions this evening and we ask your blessing on those in need, near and far. In the Lord's name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to go into the item C, the adoption of the agenda. I would ask for, with the motion, that we add a new exhibit, excuse me, new item, 11A, Utilities Committee Report, which came in after this was printed. So if we can have that with the motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Both? Okay.
Todd is saying there's a sound problem.
Is that better? Okay. See, you did it. Okay. The, okay, approval of item D, the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 3rd, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? And the regular council meeting of June 17th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Item E, we have two awards proclamations to give. Councilman Gallagher is gonna go down and put them there with the proclamation recognizing Pennix General Contractors on its 87th anniversary. And after that one, it will be the proclamation recognizing the Junior Assembly of Gastonia on its 25th anniversary. But first, we'll start with Pennix, RH Pennix Incorporated and Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it a whole bunch. Have two gentlemen here from Pennix, Ron Pantusa and Brad Drury, and we're gonna read the proclamation for your firm and we really do appreciate you being here for 87 years. That's amazing. Matter of fact, the reason I came across them was because of Run for the Money. I was not running. I can't run, my knee is really bad, but we were going out, I was doing the walk for the money and as we were walking by, I went by Pennix's office, it was right there, they were handing out water. I got in a conversation with Ron and found out that their firm was here for X amount of years and one thing led to another and here they are. So let me read their proclamation. Whereas, in 2014, Pennix General Contractors is celebrating 87 years of service, private and government clients in the region and continues to offer a range of construction services for commercial and industrial, private sector and government work. And whereas, for the last 87 years, Pennix General Contractors has thrived due to the flexibility of the organizational structure, customer loyalty. Over 75% of their business comes from repeat customers. Strong relationships with other construction professionals and companies committed to craft work and professional training through organizations like the Carolinas Association of General Contractors. And whereas, Pennix General Contractors concentrates on contracting work in a 60-mile radius, allowing their company to hire and retain quality employees by keeping them home at night with their families. Whereas, since 1985, Pennix General Contractors has operated under the ownership and management of John Pike Judson and the company's revenues has grown from $1.2 million in 1985 to an average of $10 million over the last five years. That's fantastic. And whereas, in 2014, Pennix General Contractors was awarded Gaston Regional Chamber Foundation Award for Business of the Year. Way to go, gentlemen. Now, therefore be resolved that the mayor, the city council of Gastonia, North Carolina, congratulate Pennix General Contractors on its 87th anniversary and for exemplary service and dedication to Gastonia and the surrounding areas and for their employees who volunteer to give their time and effort to our community and its citizens by doing community service. And witness whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal to be affixed on this 15th day of July in the year of our Lord 2014. And I just wanna say, thank you very much, gentlemen. Here is a copy of your proclamation for you guys to put up on your, you know, frame it and put it up.
Perfect.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you'd like to say a few words, please do.
We'd just like to thank the city council and also all our past and present customers and all the friendships that we have gotten from our past customers and we do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for all you do. Thanks for everything, Ron. Appreciate it.
As is usual, for the case, I think Porter and I are probably the two that remembered Mr. Pennix. And maybe Brenda, I don't know, as a baby. Not 87 years when he started, but wonderful, wonderful part of this community. As a matter of fact, his first home was about then on Belvedere and so that's been a long time ago. I'd like, this time, if I could, to call the co-directors and the founders of the Junior Assembly of Gastonia, celebrating 25 years, Beverly Sumner and Ellen Maxwell, to let us look at you, please. Come up. Hello. See. I wanna read a proclamation from the city of Gastonia, from the city council. Whereas, since its inception in 1989, the Junior Assembly of Gastonia has dedicated their dance, social etiquette and manners for a lifetime program to our youth's transition into successful adulthood. And whereas, even though they are learning manners for a lifetime, the children are having fun and gaining self-confidence all under the auspices of adult chaperones, professional instruction, martial support from past Junior Assembly graduates and in a safe and desirable environment. And whereas, Mrs. Beverly Sumner and Mrs. Ellen Maxwell, co-directors and founders of the Junior Assembly of Gastonia, have enjoyed directing this honorable endeavor and are proud of all of their students who, they say, have also kept them young at heart. And whereas, the Junior Assembly of Gastonia is pleased to be celebrating its 25th anniversary of service to the youth of Gaston County and surrounding communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the council of the city of Gastonia, North Carolina congratulate the Junior Assembly of Gastonia on its 25th anniversary and their contributions to Gastonia and the surrounding area. And witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed, this the 15th day of July in the year of our Lord 2014. John D. Bridgman, mayor of Virginia, Creighton city clerk. Thank you, ladies, very much for what you do. I probably need to take lessons myself, but several of us possibly, but we're so glad to have you. We're fortunate to have you, first of all, in Gastonia and it's certainly for the Junior Assembly. Say something to the city, either one of you, Mike, and then shake.
It's truly been an honor and a privilege to serve some of the young people in Gaston County for 25 years and tonight means so much to Ellen and to me. We thank you for this honor. We've loved every minute of it. Thank you very much.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Hey, how are you?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I need blessings too. Do we need to make motions on those two proclamations?
Is there, is there a motion at this time to approve these awards? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is item E under presentation, excuse me, item F under presentation, the recognition of the Gastonia Police Department SWAT team and this, I'd like to call on Assistant Chief Rob Hilton this time, please.
Mayor, council, it's my honor once again to be here with good news. I'm here with members of our Gastonia Regional SWAT team and before I begin, though, I want to recognize the fact that among the team, we have two members from the Gaston County Sheriff's Office and tonight, we have the sheriff here, Sheriff Allen Cloninger, here in the back, and also his chief deputy, his new chief deputy, Kim Johnson, is also here with us too, Chief Johnson. For the second consecutive year, the Gastonia Police Department's Regional SWAT team has brought home a first-place overall win in a SWAT competition in Salemburg, North Carolina. This three-day 2014 competition sponsored by the North Carolina Tactical Officers Association was held April 15th through the 17th and consisted of 10 teams from police departments, sheriff's offices and the U.S. Army's Fort Bragg. The team participated in eight events, won first place in five events, second place in one event, and third place in two events for an overall first-place finish. This was the second year that they have won this and I think that really validates this team and speaks well for a team that's working with multi-agencies together, coming together to have a win. And I think it also speaks for the training and preparation and the skills that have been developed and these skills can be applied to real-life situations. I want to take this opportunity to publicly and personally thank all the members of the team that participated and worked hard in preparing for this. I also wanted to thank all the members of our team for their service. This is a voluntary assignment, it's something that they don't have to do, it's something they sign up to do and many of the members that are on our team have been there for a long time. And these officers, at the end of the day, save lives. They keep our community safe and they also keep our officers safe. I have with me also the commander that went down and a couple of the team leaders that maybe could answer, if you had any questions or any comment about any specifics about the event, they're here and they could speak to that as well. Captain Britton is here and a couple of others, so if you had any questions about the event, certainly they could answer those.
Any questions? Comments?
Yeah, I appreciate what they do. Glad that we have them on board and well-trained to take care of these unusual situations that they have to deal with.
We're very proud of all of them and of the award. We're proud of them here. Makes us all feel safe to have them here. Makes you wonder if they rent them out for teenagers when you leave town. I used to do that a long time. We'd say the National Guard at that time. No, seriously, it's, we're very proud of this honor. We were then and we certainly are now.
Mayor? Yes, sir. I had a couple of questions. One was, how do you all prepare or train for this event? And then secondly, what was the weather like that particular weekend?
Mr. Mayor, council, Councilman Curlin, the training is continuous. Much of what these events that Chief Hilton spoke of are things that we train day in and day out. When we do have our training days, we focus on a lot of these, which is the shooting under stress and the focus on accuracy, which obviously speaks well with the numbers we brought home. Eight total events and five first place and placing in the other three. We felt like we needed to get out of there pretty quick. We weren't very popular with the other teams. In addition to that, Councilman, we had two full-time teams that we were competing against. So in a reference point there, those are two teams that all they do is this SWAT, this SWAT operation. So, and as far as the weather, I think it, for me, it was rather comfortable, but I think it got a little warm for these guys and I'd just like to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, the pride for me is the accomplishment that these guys made. Obviously, they took the training to heart and they went down and they wanted to bring this home back to the city and the citizens of Gaston County.
Yes, sir. That was all.
I wanna ask a question. Do you go through an exercise where inside a building, you'll be going through the building like you're in a home or in an emergency situation, all of a sudden you have a bad guy flash up or a good guy flash up? You have to be just like that to make sure you don't shoot the good guy? Do you go through that?
Yes, sir. And many of these events, much like what we did on our press release with the article, many of these events are target recognition and much like I said prior to, when you put the body under stress and you apply that target recognition, it is a learned skill and these gentlemen behind me are experts at it.
You gotta be really alert to not shoot the good guy.
That's exactly right. A lot of repercussions there.
Is this the total team?
This is not, unfortunately. We had some folks that had some prior engagements they could not break and we were unable to get them here this evening.
How many are on the team, total?
Total, we have with the regional team, we're right at 18 now. So we are very healthy in numbers and again, it's from the support from the chiefs and the sheriff and all the teams that are not Gastonia PD that do apply resources to the SWAT team.
We do appreciate that.
Mr. Gallagher?
Captain?
Yes, sir.
What's remarkable about, remarkable about it all is not just that you guys had, you know, five first places out of eight events, that in itself says a lot, but you did it two years in a row. That's what's remarkable and that says a lot about the gentleman behind you.
Exactly. And thank you, Councilman, and again, I could not emphasize enough, it's the guys behind me that brought these trophies home. So to them, guys, I appreciate it.
Brendan?
I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
For them to go back this budget year, is it in the budget?
We have, we're gonna have to do some discussion. We actually, this has sparked some interest beyond the borders of North Carolina. There's some additional competitions. Again, the support would have to be there, but we would like to be able to venture out into some other, some other states, if at all possible.
Well, this one council person would love for you to venture out into some other states and show some of these other states what North Carolina has.
Sounds good to us, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Chief?
Cap, do we, are there possibilities that we could get into a regional competition?
We actually have made some, had some discussions about that and I wanna make sure I'm clear, Councilman, are you speaking as competing in or?
Correct.
Yes, those are the ones that I'm speaking of. There's some world competitions that are in the southeastern part of the United States, one specifically in Florida that is well-respected and tenured. There's also other ones, the western part of the United States, but a little bit more mileage involved there.
Save your frequent flyer miles.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Yes, thank you very much. Chief, Captain.
Officer Stephen Rollins.
Officer Eric Segal.
Deputy Jason Ellis.
Congratulations.
Deputy Stephen Strickland.
Congratulations.
Sergeant Scott Howard.
Way to go.
Sergeant Craig Singer.
Thank you for what you do.
Sergeant Paul Smith.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Gave me some support after.
Before we leave, and he leaves, Sheriff, always wanted to do that, but you, just come up just a second, and with your assistant chief. This is non-scripted and not on the agendas. You get what you pay for here. Just wanted to say that, and I'm sure I speak for the council and for the city, that sure makes me feel good to see the way y'all work together, the way that, certainly the county and the city, but the Sheriff's Department. And Kim, congratulations to you too.
Thank you.
Well-deserved and I think you certainly do a good job. We appreciate your help and we appreciate your assistance and they're there for you and you're there for them and it's always sort of been the way it is and so we appreciate you.
When Chief Salt was here and Chief Conley was a part of it also, we formulated the regional SWAT team in which presently Mount Holly, Belmont, Cherivale, the sheriff's office, city of Gastonia, Lowell and Stanley are part of. And it saves taxpayer dollars because we're all working together. We have people on the team, some on the entry side, some just working on the control side. I've gone out about every call out with the folks and you have an excellent team, but it protects the whole, all and all those towns and it is a great partnership and we appreciate the city's involvement because they do play a major role, but in law enforcement today, the partnerships are what matters because we've got to work together to make sure that all our citizens in the county is, are well-protected. And I appreciate you being a part and allowing the city police to be a part and taking the lead in this and very proud of the young men that won this award. Just wanna say thank you because it's a good thing for the Gaston County.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we, there's no sign-up under the public expression. The consent agenda, I believe you had a question on one of these, on the consent agenda, item seven, did you wanna ask before we vote on this?
That would be fine, Mayor, if I could, and probably direct the question to Mr. Munn. For item seven, the award of contract grinding of yard waste and leaf debris, is it actually cheaper for the city to contract that out? Do we not have the equipment necessary to do that in-house? I see Paul's here, so maybe he can answer.
Paul's either coming up or leaving.
I mean, I'm sure there's a good reason, I just, I'm sure there's a good reason for this, I just don't know what it is.
We've always had a mixture of city employees and also private contractors and I'll let Paul speak to the specific.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the equipment that you're talking about is very pricey and it's very specific to operate. It's one of those things that you'd use maybe two, three times a year and the added expense of having the equipment and the qualified personnel to operate that equipment, it's cheaper for us to contract to an outside source. And with this price, it's all based on the amount of leaves and the amount of debris that's done every year. If we have a light year where there's not a lot of leaves, not a lot of brush coming in, your payback on your equipment's gonna extend out compared to if you have it, if you have that equipment on a year like we just had where we have all the leaves and the brush in there. So it is, we have looked at it in the past, it's just a matter that the cost of that equipment and having a qualified personnel to run that equipment two, three times a year is not really beneficial to the city.
You had me at cheaper.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the consent? Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, any other questions? All in favor, please, put your hand. Thank you. Moving along to item, excuse me, item number nine, the agreement to furnish construction manager at risk services to the city of Gastonia for pre-construction phase of the water treatment plant renovation project, Rogers Crowder, at a cost not to exceed $550,927. The presentation will be by Mr. Matt Bernhardt, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Pleased to bring to you this agreement and this firm at the end of a very thorough selection process. As you're aware, the city is currently in the middle of its water plant rehabilitation and renovation project and we are currently in the design phase of that project. One of the tasks incumbent upon us in the design phase is the selection of a construction manager at risk to work closely with the architects and engineers. P's Engineering, Mr. Keith Garbrick is representing them. And I would also add that we have officials from Rogers Crowder here as well. We have Mr. Eric Riekerd, who is the chief operating officer, and Mr. John Taylor, who is the, is the vice president with the firm. But...
officer, and Mr. John Taylor, who is the, is the vice president with the firm. One of our next steps is to select a construction manager at risk to work with the engineers and architects on the project through this design phase. The, part of that during the design phase would be the development of a guaranteed maximum price, which would establish the construction fees as well as the actual hard cost of the construction for the project, which would be brought back to the council for its consideration. And to make a, be able to make a recommendation to the council for a firm to select, city staff conducted a very thorough, very lengthy selection process involving a formal request for qualifications, which we did according to the general statutes, and we were very pleased that we advertised it broadly and we had a very strong response with ten firms responding and a pool of candidates that we considered to be very deep and very skilled. We went through a selection process, reviewing the presentations, the materials that were, the qualification statements that were presented, and we then shortlisted five firms, very impressive group and we were very pleased that we had the confidence in discussion that we felt like any of those five firms would do a good job, so it was a very, very nice position to be in. We invited the five firms to a one-hour interview and then followed that interview up with a question and answer session, that was after reviewing their initial presentations of the qualifications they had submitted, and after all those firms were interviewed, pleased to report that the selection committee, which was comprised of city management, the assistant manager, the assistant city attorney, the members of the water plant project team, which is comprised of myself, Rusty Boss, Don Garbrick, Keith Garbrick and Ed Cross, that group was, is pleased to unanimously recommend the firm of Rogers Crowder Construction to you, it is a joint venture between two very capable and qualified firms, Rogers Construction is one of the top vertical construction companies in the Carolinas, they are based over in Charlotte, as is Crowder's Construction, which is one of the top water and sewer construction contractors, and the partnership, we believe, brings the necessary skills and capabilities to be able to effectively undertake this project with us and for us. Rogers Crowder is proposing to provide turnkey CM at risk pre-construction services, which includes estimating, pre-qualification of subcontractors, bid solicitation, bid review, constructibility and cost-saving studies, procurement and site logistics planning for that negotiated fee, not to exceed the, I should say, for $550,927, and I would add that that fee is in line with industry standards for projects of this scope and type, and as the project progresses through, as I mentioned earlier, we will work with the CM at risk and the architects and engineers to formulate a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, which would then be brought back to the council. This agreement has been reviewed by the city legal department as well as by the city's retained construction law council and is in conformance with our procedures for expenditure contracts. Funding for this will come from the city's water and sewer fund and is included in the 2014, 2015 budget. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
Questions?
Matt, two questions. First question is, was this firm, you vetted them very well, from what I could read in the report, but were they chosen because they were cheapest or they were the best
We chose them because they were the best skilled, best qualified in the estimation of the group that did the review, they rated very highly, and we felt like the team that was presented to us in the interviews, and we were very specific in the interviews, we specified the personnel, we didn't want to just see company presidents or public relations people, we wanted to see the people that we would actually be working directly with, so we basically asked them to bring their project team and our project team met with their project team and asked a great deal of questions and again, it was the unanimous consensus that the team that Rogers Crowder brought, we felt like gave us the greatest chance of a successful project and a successful outcome.
Thank you. The other question I have is, are they, have they done this in the past where they've worked on a project where the engine is actually running and you have to work on the engine running in order to complete the task?
That was some of the questions and some of the criteria that we had in our selection process, we wanted to know the different candidates' experience with projects of this type, Crowder's Construction actually specializes in water and wastewater plant construction, that is their wheelhouse, so to speak, and between the two firms, they have considerable experience.
But they have experience working when our water facility is going to be running, at the same time, we're going to have to construct a new facility within the facility.
That's correct, it's our understanding that's a particular specialty for Crowder's.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Matt, what was the cost basis differential between this particular company and the next one or the one right below them as far as what we would be paying?
Well, sir, we did not do, this was not a bidding per se, under the request for qualifications process, we, for professional services of this type, we select a firm based on their materials and their experience, skills, knowledge, qualifications, and then we negotiate with that firm, so we didn't get numbers from all of the firms per se because the way that it is specified under the law to do this for the qualifications-based process for professional services, we do it based on the skills, experience, knowledge of the consultant.
Did we get numbers from any other firm?
We did not, as I said, the process required us to talk directly with this firm after they were selected for recommendation.
That's what I wanted you to explain, Matt, because I think a lot of the council have not experienced this type of a contract before and the fact that you're not throwing things out in a bid-like fashion with numbers, that you're really going after the most qualified individuals and then knowing, again, what the approximate cost should be based upon, you know, projects of this scope, size, complexity, et cetera, you kind of know where they should come in and probably all these firms would probably come in at very similar numbers, I'm sure.
Right.
But at the end of the day, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the last thing we want is the lowest bidder when you're talking about a project of this scope and size.
Councilman, you're exactly correct, as critical a facility as the water plant is, we wanted to have the best picture, so to speak, we wanted to have tremendous expertise in water and wastewater, we wanted to have a very experienced CM at risk, someone that had done that process numerous times and had done it very successfully, this joint venture is a, and I really probably would not do as well as Mr. Reekard in giving you their resume, the resumes of both firms are considerable and impressive, some of the projects that, again, Crowder specializes in water and wastewater plant work, they've done it all over the Carolinas, they've done work here for Gastonia in the past on a number of projects, they have a considerable resume of their own, Rogers in the CM at risk arena is equally impressive, many of you have probably, no doubt, been to Knight Stadium, it's not called Knight Stadium, but the BB&amp;T Stadium, they built that, they've done a number of very significant projects of that type, this is a marriage of two firms with significant resumes and, but more so, the two project teams kind of clicked from the get-go, we knew them, some of them, having done work for us in the past, we felt like they were very honest and open with us, they weren't telling us just what we wanted to hear to get the job, and we also didn't feel like they were just after a dollar, we felt like they had a very successful track record and resume by being very attentive to their clients and by problem-solving their way through jobs and by knowing the construction marketplace, we wanted somebody that knew the Charlotte metro area, the Charlotte, you know, this local regional construction marketplace for water and wastewater in particular, and we feel like they rose to the top of the process based on that experience that they have.
One other question. So take us through this just one step further, you know, this is a CM at risk for the pre-construction phase.
Right.
Okay, and we're looking at a certain scope of services and a certain dollar figure that's attached to the scope, that scope of services, now, are we going back to the market during the construction phase or are we going to negotiate with these same individuals to do the, you know, the actual construction with a second contract that we'll see at a later point in time?
We will work through and finalize the design of the project and at different points, thirty, sixty, ninety percent, they will deliver us estimates based on what they see in the project, what we work through together, and it will culminate in that GMP, the guaranteed maximum price, and then we would contract with them and they would, in effect, go build the plant.
Okay, so we're not going back for another RFQ or anything like that?
No, sir.
But we will see a different contract at some point for the actual construction phase?
There would be a different contract that would come forward for the construction, build around that GMP, that price estimate for the plant project.
Right.
And that would come back to this council for review and consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Matt, just for clarity, for my sake, is this, are we dealing with two different companies or is this one company that is a corporation, LLC, whatever, are we dealing with Rogers and then we're dealing with Crowder?
That actually was one of the questions that we asked during the process because we saw some differences between the different candidates, and some proposals were presented as a joint venture between two equal partners, but in fact, when you got down to the fine print, it was all one firm, and so we looked at that very carefully, this is a joint venture company formed by these two firms of considerable experience for the purpose of handling water and sewer-related construction CM at risk or alternative delivery projects of this type.
So, we're dealing with two separate companies?
That have formed a company together.
That have formed a company together, so they are a company, so if we have any issues, then we don't have to go through this company or that company, we go through this company.
Right, we deal with this company and we asked for the joint venture firms, we said, who is your deciding, you know, partner of the two firms, if you're in a partnership, who makes the final call on any issue, and we, and they had to give us that, you know, designation of who that was, what firm that was.
Okay, I have one other, who are the other four that we interviewed?
You know, I knew I was going to get asked that and I forgot to bring that list, so with some help of the other project team members, I'm going to try to go through them. There was Garnie Pennix, a partnership of two firms, there was HDR Constructors, which is an offshoot of HDR Engineering, nationwide or actually worldwide firm, there was Hickory Construction and Western Summit, a joint venture of two firms, and PC LaChase, Pizza Galley Construction and LaChase, a partnership of two firms there, all of those firms have considerable experience, all of those five, we felt like would do a good job, so it became down to measuring between five very qualified companies, and it's a credit in a very competitive process, a very competitive pool, a very talented pool, that these folks rose to the top of that, and that it was still a unanimous decision.
But there was a Gastonia firm interviewed in the five?
There was.
Thank you. Kim? Thank you, Your Honor, two questions, Matt, number one, was this corporation, this PC, formed specifically for this job task?
No, sir, this was something that had already been done by these firms for projects of this type, I think the marketplace, as we all know, is headed in this direction, there's been some frustrations in the past, some that we've all experienced with the traditional design bid-build process, and alternative delivery is increasing by types such as CM at risk, and so with the market heading in that direction, these two firms had already formed this partnership, it was not formed just for this project.
How long ago, how many years have they been a partnership?
Perhaps I should call Mr. Reekard up to answer that for you because that may go outside of the knowledge that I have with me, so, Mr. Reekard, if you want to come up?
Good evening, my name's Eric Reekard, I'm the joint venture manager for Rogers Crowder, so a slight correction on what Matt said, Rogers and Crowder have worked together for many years, Rogers has been in business for fifty years and Crowder for over sixty years, when Mr. Rogers, before he started Rogers Builders in 1963, he worked for Crowder, so our companies go way back, we have both subcontracted work from each other, and, but as far as the joint venture goes, we did set the joint venture up, we typically set those up as a project-specific relationship, so we did, this one was set up specifically for this project, so we have a joint venture agreement for this project, if we were to do another project, even for the City of Gastonia, we would still set up another, it would be Rogers Crowder two or three or four, and we've just found that to be the simplest way, if we do it as a company, we have to set it up as an LLC or something like that and we found that most of our clients like it better if we do it as a specific joint venture for that project, the benefit to the joint venture is as we bond the project, we'll do what's called jointly and separately responsible, which means both companies, if the project ends up being a $52 million project, both bonds for each company will cover the $52 million, so if either company were to go out of business, the other company steps in and takes that over, so you really get a double bang for your buck, if you will.
Thank you.
Another question. Yeah?
Thanks, sir.
Matt, for some time now, we've been hearing about the new filtering technology or something you guys are looking at using.
Yes, sir.
And these companies have experience with that new technology?
That was also some of the criteria that we asked because of the possibility of membrane filtration technology, the fact that we're running two pilot units from different companies right now, testing them. right now, testing them to, just to show that they can handle the kind of water that we, raw water that we have under any circumstances, summer, winter, all the ins and outs. One of our criteria was knowledge not only of water plant projects, but knowledge of membrane filtration plant projects. And they had that experience as well.
Questions?
Let me say that I, both of you have multi-times, I think, answered my question that I was going to ask is, I'm assuming that there's not, you know, it's a fairly simple name. It's not anything confusing. But I'm assuming that's the Pat Rogers Company that's built. Okay. Personally, I've, in forty-four years, I haven't had any connection with, with Crowder or even, even in the seventies, Crowder and Rogers, I think, have an excellent, as Penix, and I have had experience, excellent reputation. This is our precious commodity. We've got to, I think y'all have done a good job, whoever gets it. But it's, I think they have an excellent name. Sort of, sort of unusual that it's Crowder, the name Crowder, over here. Crowder's Creek, Crowder's Mountain, you name it. But facetiously, but that, but I do think that they, Rogers Builders and Crowder have excellent reputation as far as designing, as the others you mentioned. Any other questions or comments? Any, would you like to say anything?
Ready for a motion?
You ready for, I'm ready for a motion.
So move we approve the requisition of staff.
Second. Second. The other discussion, all in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to take just one second and then we'll continue right on. It seems that we have some Boy Scouts in the audience and I'd like for them to come up and introduce themselves and tell us where, what troop they're from and so on. Be seen. And we'll continue right along.
Mention your rank.
My name's Thania Bowman. I am a Life rank and I'm working on my Eagle Scout.
My name is Wesley Bowman from Troop Fifty-Eight and I'm Life Scout, also working on my Eagle.
Can I ask you two questions?
Go ahead.
Brenda, after you.
What Eagle project are you working on?
We, we are installing laminate floor in a locker, locker room.
Where?
In my school.
Where is that?
Cranberd and Christian Academy.
Oh, okay. Okay. Very good.
I am installing the lockers that will be in that locker room at Cranberd and Christian.
Thank you.
Your brothers?
Yes, sir.
Walt?
Quick question for the laminate person. Is it as easy to put down as it is on TV?
As it is on TV.
We see these home shows and it looks like it's a one, two, three thing.
Oh, yeah. We're glad you're with us and I know you're proud of us. Okay. Item ten is the Gastonia Conference Center Management Agreement. I believe I'll turn it over to the city manager presentation, please, and we can go from there.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you can see, we have a number of different names on this particular agenda item. So, depending upon what the question is, we'll have a different staff person or Mr. Owen to be able to answer it. If you could look at exhibit ten in the council agenda, it, it provides the new contract and also a memo that provides some background. And, and to just go into that background, on, on February twenty-eleven, the city council entered into a contract with Gastonia, the Gastonia Conference Center LLC, which is Wilderman Group. That contract was established and then we had an amendment to it in April of twenty thirteen. And that clarified a number of items and provides some additional terms and conditions. Now, what you have before you tonight is essentially a lot of the language in the original contract, but we've simplified a good bit of it because some of it talked about the actual construction of the conference center. That has been removed and we've tried to make some of the provisions that we added last year in the amendment, we've included those in, in the body of the contract. The basic elements are the following, that the Gastonia Conference Center LLC continues to manage and operate the conference center. And that's in Article One. In Article Four, there is a two-year term established. This contract is a, is a two-year term, beginning July first, twenty fourteen, whereupon the approval of the city council and ending June thirtieth, twenty sixteen. If no default occurs during this initial two-year term, then a third term, which is referred to as a renewal term, is provided. And in that renewal term, six months through the renewal term, there is a requirement that the parties negotiate in good faith for an additional term. Article Five deals with furniture, fixtures and equipment repair and replacement reserve. This is an important reserve as the facility gets older. Three percent of gross revenues for the initial term and four percent for gross revenues for the renewal term. The loss limits. Loss limits were established when we did the amendment last year. That loss limit provision is carried forward in this particular contract. A hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar loss limit for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, fifteen, which is the same amount that we had this year. And then a hundred and eighty thousand the following year in twenty-fifteen, sixteen. And then for twenty-sixteen, seventeen, it would reduce to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And again, this loss limits is essentially that this is the most the city can pay in terms of the loss at the conference center. If there's any additional loss, then the operator, the manager of the conference center would have to bear that. These were not established in the original agreement. In terms of the payment, the payment would be fifty percent the first working day in July and the fifty percent first working day in January. That is for cash flow purposes. The base fee is indicated in Article Seven of the contract. That is six thousand eight hundred dollars a month. That's the same fee that has been in place from the beginning and the same as the twenty-eleven agreement. Article Nine modifies the requirements for public liability insurance and it's a three hundred, or excuse me, a three million dollar coverage per occurrence and clarifies the insurance language to reflect the management operational responsibilities. Article Ten stipulates that Bill Owen shall be assigned as the general manager of the center as long as he's employed with the Wilderman Group and talks about such, you know, what the provisions are should Mr. Wilderman not be involved with, with, with the management group and the council's approval of that.
Mr. Owen.
Mr. Owen.
What did I say?
You said Mr. Wilderman.
I'm sorry. Mr. Owen. I stand corrected. Yes. Mr. Owen. So, Bill Owen. Then, then in Article Fourteen, early termination provides early termination clause. It's a cancellation fee essentially during the first two years is forty thousand dollars if the agreement is terminated without cause in the first two years. There's a, with the, there's no cancellation fee in the third year. A hundred and twenty-day notice to terminate. If either party has the right to terminate within sixty days, if there's actually a breach, if there is some event. Now, when, in the twenty-eleven agreement, that, that cancellation fee was eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. So, this is half of that. Then in Article Fifteen, maintains the business plan and communication wording developed in the First Amendment of the contract in April of twenty-thirteen. So, this, this proposal that you have before you has been negotiated between the management group and the city of Gastonia, as is indicated in the conclusion section of, of the agenda here. We, we see growth in their, their, their sales, growth in their revenues and actually a reduction in the cost to the city over these years. So, we recommend that you approve this contract as, as submitted. And we also have with, with us, Mr. Owen, who can speak to the actual operations of the, of the conference center and also Mr. Baumader, who is very instrumental in putting this contract together. And Melody is here to answer all the financial questions.
Questions? Anyone? Comments?
Where do you want to begin? Definitions. Let's talk about definitions. What is the definition of the word cause in the contract? When we talk about without cause? What is cause? It is not defined in the contract.
Right. You know, I'll let the attorney speak to that. Cause is an event that, that runs against the writing in any contract, that there is something that, that has happened that you are supposed to, for instance, we're supposed to deposit funds and we don't deposit funds. That's an event, a cause, but it's, but I, my.
You look to the plain meaning, the plain meaning of the word. It's talking about a breach.
Breach.
A violation of some specific term of the contract. Okay. So, it's not for lack of performance? Well, I mean, lack of performance could, could be a breach. You know, I need to look to a specific part of the contract that you're saying that that's a breach of. I just, I just see it as a very broad term that, you know. Where are you looking at? Well, I mean, I'm just looking at the manager's summary that on the second page, ten dash two, Article Fourteen, under early termination, it says that, you know, if the agreement is terminated without cause. Right. So, so, you know, we start getting into this concept of if we have a problem, how much of a problem do we have? What is it? And then what justifies that? And then do we get into a legal wrangling because we thought it justified termination and they did not because they didn't think it was a justifiable cause? Well, now, that's always a possibility, but that section, early termination, is supposed to be, you know, payment of, of a fee if you want to terminate for convenience. And if you're not satisfied with the performance in a general term and you can't point to any specific breach of a material term of the contract, then you terminate for convenience. Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor. Counselor, isn't, isn't really to go a little bit further with Dr. Curlin's question, cause is something that is rebuttable?
Definitely, the defense attorney will, will claim that, yes. They, they will say that there is an explanation and we're justified and you get into an argument. That is, that often happens.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gregg.
Going back to Article Four on page ten dash one, the renewal term, okay? Does that automatically put us in a, in a position to where we, if everything's going all right, but there's a few things that we don't like, can we not get out of that? I mean, after the initial term as opposed to having a renewal term of another year?
With the renewal, with the renewal term, there's no penalty. You don't have to pay the forty thousand dollar penalty.
Right. Okay.
But the idea is that the renewal term, if you notice, six months through, is there's a requirement that both sides sit down and negotiate. But that negoti, at least by then, could start right away. So, that third year is, is really there for negotiating for the future.
The third year does automatically renew.
It automatically renews.
It automatically renews. And then in terms of renegotiation, you know, we are in a five-year contract right now, which we have chosen to renegotiate. We're, we're replacing the last two years of that five-year contract now with this contract. So, every contract is always possible to renegotiate.
A three-year contract, basically, if it automatically renews, then we're talking about a three-year contract and not a two-year contract if it automatically renews.
It automatically renews unless you give the notice that you don't want the renewal term. Right. If you don't want the third year, you give the notice that you're not going to allow the contract to be renewed for the third year. But if you don't say anything, it's automatically going to renew.
Questions?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I have some questions for Mr. Wilderman, so I wondered if he could approach the, is that, is that okay now? Or, I mean, do we have a certain process we're going through?
I think Mr. Owen was going to make a presentation about the operation and.
Okay. Well, if you want to do that first, then we'll ask questions of those individuals, whichever way you want to go.
Yeah. I think Mr. Owen is prepared to make a, a presentation to tell you what, what's going on at the conference center this year and where they're headed next year.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, I appreciate the time to update you on some of the happenings at the, at the conference center. And the big thing here I really want to talk about is the, is the sales piece. We've done a good job as far as the controls to date. We've done a good job as far as the service to date. And the question has always been, well, the sales, and that's the most important, and I agree a hundred percent. Last year, we increased revenues year over year ten percent. And even though respectable in the industry, that's not where we needed to be. And we realize that. And April, the sales, our sales efforts started to really kick in. And the fourth quarter, which ended two weeks ago of this past year or whatever, we increased revenues year over year by forty-eight thousand dollars or forty percent increase, which is a big number. More important than that, the first quarter of this new fiscal year, which started two weeks ago, we are sitting right now, two weeks into it, fifteen thousand dollars above what we completed last year. So, those numbers are only going to move forward. And just shows positioning-wise where we're at. What's really driving this is the corporate market. It's the Monday through Friday-based business. It's the McDonald's, the BB and T, it's Edward Jones, it's Allen Tate, US Foods, the list goes on and we continue to grow that business. And combine that with the local repeat business, with the Rotary, the Gaston Realtors, the Chamber, Economic Development, you solidify a great base Monday through Friday to drive off of. And that's why our revenues are moving at this point right now and very, and positioning ourselves in a very, very, very good place. And the other piece about the, the Monday through Friday business that's important is its repeat business. These groups are booking quarterly, monthly and weekly and it's numbers that we can forecast moving forward. So, that gives us a chance to move into the social, the weekends and the evenings. A part of our plan for next year, which is already budgeted, is we have another sales manager coming on board, which is going to enable us to focus one manager full-time on the corporate market, one manager full-time on the social market. Combine that with the Tourism Authority, which is now in the process of putting together a sales manager that's going to focus on weekend business. It's all, it's, it's all positive for us as far as where we're positioning ourselves. The model that we have moving forward in the next year is a very strong model and one that I'm very, very happy with, where exactly where we're positioned, what we have on the books, where we finished last year. And is why I'm here today and would love to be a part of this moving forward. And that's it.
Questions of Mr. Owen? Yes, sir.
The, the Tourism Authority position you're referring to.
Yes.
Is that going to be funded strictly by the Tourism Authority?
Yes.
Okay. The additional outside sales position that you have slated in next year's budget.
Yes.
Okay. Is to the tune of how many dollars?
For the position?
Yes.
Forty-five thousand.
Okay. So, how much new business does that individual have to book in order to break even?
I have him budgeted about a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Hundred and ten thousand dollars of new business?
Of new business.
Okay. That would equate, equate to how many new events per month?
Oh, depending on the event. That could be, that could be ten or it could be, it could be a hundred.
What is the average revenue per rent currently?
It's, honestly, it's all over the board. We have.
I'm saying average and I'm, I'm not talking about range. I'm talking about average.
The average event's a two thousand dollars.
Okay. That's, that's what I. Okay, that's what I calculated.
Yeah.
So that individual's going to have to bring in approximately 50-plus events in order to break even on that person's salary, is that correct?
On an average or larger events, yes. And considering that we have one individual now that's bringing in over half a million dollars, and again, base business that's grown or whatever, I don't feel that budget or that challenge is that great, to be honest with you.
Okay. I want to go back and talk briefly about, and this is coming from, I guess, a proposed budget that you all presented when you got together with us. It came out of this document, okay?
Okay.
When we met with you all. And so I wanted to see, you know, if these are still kind of the numbers that you're thinking about. In terms of sales and marketing, it looks like you're talking about $30,500. Does that sound approximately right?
As far as expenses, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So where does that money go? Is that going to outside sources?
Yes. It goes to, a large portion of it goes to the Sumner Group, probably close to half of it. We pay them about $1,000 a month on the... To maintain our website, to work with us as far as print, magazines. The other can be anything from just... We were in, like, for example, the North Carolina Business Magazine last year, any type of brochure that we put together, any kind of menus, that sort of stuff.
Okay. In terms of professional services, which, again, you've got here approximately $23,000, what does that include?
That's the accounting firm, sir, out of Charleston, that handles all of our business. That's Kurtz, they handle all of our accounting. We are centralized out of Charleston, so all of our numbers, our payroll, everything goes out of there. We pay them $1,800 a month. A couple of months during the year, we pay them $2,500 because they do taxes and a little few other things too, sir.
Okay. How many hours a month do you spend with city staff?
City staff as far as...
City of Gastonia staff, when, I think, don't you meet monthly with the staff?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. How many hours a month do you meet with the staff?
An hour plus, once a month to review the actual financials.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, that's...
In addition, there is interface with other parts of our staff, for instance, IT, phone systems, parking, police. You know, from time to time, there'll be other parts of the city that will interface with employees at the Conference Center.
We get unbelievable support from the city, especially from the Engineering Department and the Police Department. Anything that we need as far as support in, they're always there. Even when we don't ask, they're there on property.
Okay. So, Mr. Munn, how many hours a month do you think the city is involved with the Conference Center with some of the activities you just mentioned?
It'll vary if you're having an issue, for instance, you know, the cameras. We were having some problems with the cameras in the parking deck. And so that got us into that particular operational issue. But actually, looking at the numbers and operation of the Conference Center, Flip and Melody and I, you know, we invested, you know, that hour and a half or so with meeting with Bill and his staff. And then we... So the rest of it is variable, depending upon the function, what's going on.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, sir. A quick question, going back to the sales position that you just enumerated. Did you give any thought at all to a lower base salary and then a commission-based compensation format, which would lower the burden on the city, the taxpayer, your company, and reward someone that's bringing in extra business?
We felt that with where we are, dollar-wise, revenue-wise, and where we need to be over the next two years, it was very important that we had someone focusing 100% of time on the social and the market. And we're also maintaining the outside prospecting piece, Denise Rothman out of New York, that actually helps me identify business in Mecklenburg County and outside of Gaston to bring in or whatever. So, yes, we are spending some money there, but it's money that will not affect the subsidy whatsoever operationally. And with the dollars, which I think are very, very doable at $100,000 or whatever, I think will pay for itself over time.
So you don't, so in other words, you don't think that the lower salary and on a commission basis for the rest would be worthwhile?
I'm not saying it wouldn't, to be honest with you. It's something that attracting, going after a position or whatever, it's easier to attract better talent with a base salary than with the commission piece. Again, based on what the commission can do. And I'm not saying that's not a good idea, but it's not the direction we have taken at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If it's okay. In your Conference Center 2014-2015 marketing plan, okay, which you also gave to us at that time, you talk about on page 13, how are we going to get there, strategies? The first one was the outside sales manager, which we've been talking about, so that's good. The second one is website. Have you been on your website lately?
Yes.
Okay. So when was the last testimonial placed on your website?
I don't know, sir.
Okay. Well, your testimonials, of the last 10 testimonials, nine are from 2012, and one are from January of 2013, okay? So your website that was updated in the spring of 2013 is already out of date in terms of getting fresh dialogue. The other thing is, is the blogs. I would say probably about 60%, maybe 70% of your blog information is on weddings. I don't think you would say that the weddings are the most profitable part of our business.
No, but the part that we're actually trying to build is on the social side. We get a lot of the requests for proposals through the website on weddings.
Right.
And that's the reason we put a lot of the wedding blogs on there, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, you know, it's, the first eight pages of blogs are about weddings, and then you go into trade shows and conferences and other types of things like that. And I just, I'm not sure, and I'm not trying to beat you up.
No, that's fine.
But, you know, I'm also trying to say, as far as accountability goes, if you're paying someone like the Sumner Group $1,000 a month?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I don't know, I had a hard time, but I couldn't find one single video on your website of showing people at the Conference Center having fun. Okay? So, you know, the Sumner Group's making a good buck at $1,000 bucks a month or whatever it is, for whatever scope of services they're doing.
Yes, sir.
More than website. But I don't see a dynamic website at this point in time, you know. And I would think that, you know, Mr. Wilderman would be on top of that, since he is the, you know, the management company here. You don't have time to look at everything, but I'm sure Mr. Wilderman has time to overview the entire operation of the facility.
No, I have to... That's totally me, nothing to do with Mr. Wilderman. Mr. Wilderman gives this operation to me. There is nothing operational that I am not responsible for. So if I miss the testimonials, all me, 100%. If I'm doing the blogs wrong, again, it's me, nothing to do with Mr. Wilderman. He leaves the operation completely in my hands.
Okay.
He does.
And then, at what point in time can we talk to Mr. Wilderman? Would you like to come to the podium, sir?
No, well, we're still, go ahead. I think that Mr. Gallagher was going to ask a question, then we can call him.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I don't want to get out of turn.
Whenever we get to the council, taken care of. You read the... Or when you want to wait?
Oh, wait, oh, wait.
One thing that I'd like to say is to sneak this one in. A long time ago, I learned that, and most of us did, that's in business, or have been, that you always want to know what your competition's doing. And I know you're no different than anybody else. A good businessperson always does that. Now, having said that, I would hope that, you're the only kid on the block, as of about yesterday or day before, Gaston Country Club is closed. It's to remodel the kitchen, totally. And they're going to have a mister or something out at the pool, but I don't, several months is going to go by that, as far as large groups go. We, you got it. And I just throw that out for us.
Yes, sir.
To the salesman. But, because it's not been publicized or anything, but they just, it's going to tear out a kitchen and redo it, and it's going to take a while.
It's good news.
And they closed it as of yesterday. Okay, Mr. Wilderman, would you like to step up, please, sir? We'll get, we'll bring this to a close, and we'll vote shortly.
Thank you, council members, I'm ready.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Happy to be here.
Yes, sir, I'm ready. Okay. Questions of Mr. Wilderman?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilderman, how do you provide corporate support to this operation?
Through regular visits to the property, sitting down with Bill, and I think Bill characterized it correctly. We believe in the manager who is onsite, making the decisions. Bill is, has a great deal of experience, and has a good head on his shoulders and a good sense of the business. And obviously, you can't grant somebody the wherewithal to make those decisions unless you have 100% confidence in him. We certainly do, and I think by virtue of the fact that his name is mentioned specifically in the new agreement, that from the city's perspective, they have a great deal of confidence in Bill Owen. But to say that on numerous meeting occasions, and whether it's a conference call or site visit, there are strategies that are suggested and strategies that are reviewed, Bill doesn't necessarily have an opportunity to know and to experience what's going on in other locations, whereas we do. And we have connections with other people in the business. We bring that to the table and say, "Bill, have you thought about this?" Or, "Bill, have you thought about going in this direction" and tweaking some parts of the business? We sit down and we discuss specifics, for instance, about six or eight months ago, where we decided not to have an onsite accounting staff, but do everything centrally, required a sign-off by Bill Owen. It was our suggestion. We suggested how that could be structured, and he signed off on it. We moved in that direction. And although one line item on the budget has gone up, two other line items on the budget have gone down significantly, and there's been a net savings in that. So we do that on an operational basis, on a benchmarking basis, and certainly on a sales and marketing basis. We review and look over Bill's shoulders and Lauren's shoulders, and he mentioned Denise Rothman, who does prospecting for us, and coordinating that effort. And relative to HR rules and regulation, taxes abiding by, and living up to the expectations of the contract, those are just some of the issues that we face on a day-to-day and week-to-week basis.
How often are you onsite?
That depends. Last year, I would say through the first half of the year, maybe as often as twice a month. And through the, through this current calendar year, I would say it's averaged about once a month.
Okay. I think what I'm trying to get at is, is I'm just really wondering what you personally are bringing to the table. It seems like you're making Bill responsible for everything on the day-to-day. He admits he's responsible for everything on the day-to-day. Do you pay any part of his compensation?
The, his salary relative to the Gastonia Conference Center is part and parcel of the Gastonia Conference Center budget.
Okay. So as far as your expenses with regard to this piece of business, other than your onsite visits and your copy machine and your telephone and your time, you don't provide any professional sales or marketing? You don't provide any accounting? All those services are jobbed out, and we pay for them as the Conference Center.
That's not entirely true. From an accounting standpoint, although I am not an accountant, I'm not a CPA, I have a vast amount of experience in reviewing operational numbers and being able to take that information and put it into suggestions to Bill and conversations that we have as to how we may improve things. From a sales and marketing standpoint, we are very much involved with looking over the operation in various areas and in the prospecting aspects, and actually physically getting involved in that. And also, we mentioned our group that now does our website and print, marketing, et cetera. We were involved with the front end of that, in negotiating that agreement. And as we do with most contracts, as we're reviewing that company's performance and the amount paid, and balancing that off, we will be sitting down with Bill and reviewing the direction that we ought to be going in for the next fiscal year.
I have a question for either you or Bill.
Sure.
And it's a question I've asked in the past. And the question I ask is, what is our break-even point with the Conference Center? On a monthly basis?
All right. I'm not sure you mean on an average monthly basis, because the nature of the business is so cyclical that averages don't mean much, because the differences between your best months and your worst months are pretty significant. So on average, and we've reviewed this, and Bill, why don't you...
Yeah, number-wise, we're right somewhere between $800,000 and $900,000 a year in revenue to, depending on the mix too, which plays a huge, huge part. But will, should be, $900,000 should definitely be our break-even point. Possibly earlier than that, based on the, again, the mix. For example, the outside catering piece of business, which we, which we obviously farm out, we get 20% profit there, that's it. No expenses, but 20% profit. On the room rental, we get 100% profit. It all flows. Same with the beverage, we have a 75% profit. AV, 100% profit. So depending on how that all mixes out or whatever, is obviously is going to affect the bottom line. So on a monthly basis, a good mark for us is around the $80,000 mark. We should be close to the break-even point.
Have we even come close to that?
We're single digits.
What? Okay. So...
Hold on a second. Our best one, I'll take that back, I'm sorry. April, we did $50,000 in revenue, and we lost $9,000. October, we did $68,000 in revenue, and we lost just under $7,000.
Now, Bill, that is one aspect of it for us.
Yes, sir.
The other aspect we have is that we have a debt that's on the building. It's not even on the expenses itself.
Right.
It's $223,000. You know, I consider all the expenses on it, not just the, you know, the expense we had. Like, for the last three years, the bottom line, we've lost $785,000. And it's been made up through the hotel motel tax. That's not even including the $223,000 that's in there. If we add that in there, it just gets, you know, it's, a total loss would be $1.4 million. I mean, that is a lot of money.
Agreed. And in the past, today, we are guaranteeing the 185 budget. And last, this past year, whatever, we're going to be right around $200,000. So we dropped that by $70,000 just by putting processes and systems in place, knocking out the inside chef and a bunch of other stuff. But, so we're at a point now, control-wise, where I think, where I'm confident that we can stay easily at the 185 mark. And if that additional salesperson comes on board and does what I think they're going to do, then we start, obviously, dropping that number down.
Bill, I like you a lot. I've seen what you've done and how it's transpired within the group itself. I, I've seen what you've done and how it's transpired within the group itself, and how it has increased. But when I look at the numbers, between 2013 and 2014, I'm seeing revenue increase of only $47,000. I mean, that's minor, man.
Based on, we're, we'll, we'll finish over, we'll finish over $50,000. It'll be 10% increase in revenue, and, and you're right. And like, I, what I was talking about earlier, is if you look at that, that's not where we need to be. Where we need to be is where we're at now, where we're at in the fourth quarter, and we're in the fourth, in the first quarter of next year, to where the sales efforts that we've done are finally taking hold and we're moving that forward. I feel confident, I feel good about where we're at right now with the revenues, and I think we've got a very, very bright future ahead of us, revenue-wise. And the cost controls are in place, they have been for the last year.
Yeah, the costs, costs are down 29,000, I could say that. But our loss decrease, I mean, last year, we had to spend $279,000 out of the hotel motel tax to make up for it, plus the 223,000.
Yes, sir.
Plus, this year, it looks like we're going to have to spend $202,000, plus the 223,000.
No, no, sorry, 185, that's it. Plus the 23, but the 185 operational is what we are, as a company, guaranteeing. So, if we lose more than 185, we pay it.
I understand that.
Okay, okay.
I do understand that. And if you decrease it from 185 and it goes down to 150, we have to write you a check for $35,000, correct?
No.
No? It's only if it goes above the 85?
The, the way the contract is written, the maximum operating payments that we would make is $185,000. The only other, real dollar expense we have is our debt service payment.
The 223.
And so, when you add those two together, it's $417,000. If you go back two years ago, in, in 2012, that number was 535,000. So, we're, we're trending down because our operating costs are getting less, and it's capped at 185. If they operate this in such a manner where their losses are greater, then it's the management group that has to deal with the loss, not the city. That's the thing that we added in 2013 when we did the amendment. So, now you have that maximum amount that the city pays in terms of loss. It's 185. Then it drops to 180 and 175 in the next two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Thanks, sir. Ed, I, I would submit also, though, that if, if I, my thinking is correct, our operating expenses, although we've seen a reduction, we're actually going to see a plateau in those reductions. You cannot, we, we can't continue to reduce forever. You're, you're going to come to a point where your operating expenses are going to come to hopefully a flat line, and really, that's, I'm, I'm thinking where they're going to stay, accepting that the $45,000, I believe it is, which is going to increase for your second salesperson.
Yes.
But with the, with the expectation that they are going to bring in more business than their salary, but in effect, we don't know that yet.
But that, you're right. You are 100%. We are bottomed out, okay? We are as lean as we're going to get at $185,000. We are, it's not going to get any leaner than that, all right? Our future is based on sales, period. I have got to move that dial. We can't sit at 600, $700,000. We've got to get to the $900,000 mark. That's the reason I'm bringing the extra salesperson on, and we'll expand upon that. But again, I've got, I've got dollars that I've got to control as far as the operation. I know I've got to be in that 185,000. So, this year, I can add one salesperson, I can still make that $185,000, based on the revenues that I'm projecting. And based on what I've seen as of recently, in the fourth quarter and the first quarter moving forward, our base business is increasing, and it's positioning ourselves very well for the future. I feel confident in the numbers that we have on for next year. And I know, I, well, we guarantee we're going to hit the bottom line, but our future, you're right, is totally on the sales side. It's not saving money anymore. We're done there.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Curran? Yes. So, you're, you're budgeting total sales for this coming year of how much?
695,000?
698 on, on this, but I didn't know how accurate this was. This was what you gave us.
Okay.
Okay. So, 698. Okay, so, we bring in this salesperson, and they do their 115 grand, okay? Well, that pushes us over 800,000, doesn't it?
No, that's to get to that, that dollar amount, sir, is to get to the 695.
Oh, that includes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That includes to get to 698 or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess my question is, is going back to the compensation, 7.2 incentive fees, you know, when we hit 800 grand, now, we're talking about growing out of this problem, when we start growing out of this problem, we're going to start paying management incentive fees of 40% for every dollar over 800,000 in this contract. 40 cents on every dollar over 800,000. That's, that's not...
But it's capped. It's capped.
Oh, it's capped, but even so, I mean, you know, if Mr. Owen does what he wants to do, which we want him to do, it won't be long before we're paying 40 cents of every dollar to Mr. Wilderman. I would question that in the contract.
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Of course.
I, I believe in the agreement, although there's a cap on the max, you can never exceed more than the base management fee, but also, there needs to be, that 40% is only paid if there are funds available to pay them, meaning we have to still be under the $185 mark. So, if there's not money to pay the 40%, then the city doesn't have to pay the 40%.
I would think you'd get your 40% when the 185 goes to zero. That's where I would think you'd get your incentive. But, you know, you know, that's why we're talking about it.
But Dave, the other side of that is, it's not attacking the debt. It's, it's not, it's not...
You know what? I'm going to tell you guys, conference centers don't make money, okay? This conference center will never break even. If you look at the, if you look at the industry, these gentlemen will tell you, conference centers don't make money, okay? So, I think it's, you know, ludicrous to consider us ever getting close to breaking even. I think controlled loss is what it's all about. If we just got down to debt service and covered our operating budget, we'd be in very good shape, personally. That's, that's my, my take on that, but, but I just, you know, again, I'm looking at some of the expenses that we have going forward, and we're going to grow, we're going to also pay. So, I'm looking at the contract very carefully.
Mr. Munn and possibly Mr. Bondear, here's a, I guess a, for me, blunt question. If this agreement's not signed, what other options are there? We, we, this is ours. This is ours, and, no, I want Mr. Munn to hear what he, I mean, it's a beautiful facility, got good management and, and nothing but excellent comments from him, and Dr. Curran's right, as the article said Sunday. That was a wonderful article, very impressive, but it, they don't pay money. Not here, not here or anywhere. They just don't, and he's right. Okay, it's there. We owe, and it's, it's, it's a large building. What options are there? We talked, we beat this thing to death. Now, what, we're going to vote here in a minute. What options are there?
Well, it, it's a city facility, and we're paying for it, and we've been paying for it for a long time, because we use bonds to pay for it, and we're paying it back. Now, we have to operate it, and the way we have been operating is using a management company. What cities and counties do that have conference centers is you have to either operate it with your city staff and grow your city staff, or you have to use a private company to manage it. We, we have been using a private company to manage it. We think that a private company is, is, is a good approach, and, and probably better than, than the city operating it. But in any case, we, the city could always be the last resort and operate it ourselves, but what, if we didn't use this firm, we would have to use another firm. I think that's the next direction that we would go. And then only as a last resort, almost like a backstop at a baseball game, it would be the city staff itself. That's probably the, the, the least desirable approach. We would, we would want to use companies that have experience in, in the area.
Any other questions that, of Mr. Munn or Mr., well, yes, sir, Mr. Owen, they're all here. Bondear, go ahead.
My questions are more for, for Mr. Munn. We talked about this contract before, before it was ever presented to us in the agenda, and we were told some time ago, the discussion was that you would look into options that we have. Yet today, we're being told there are other options, but they're not here. Why are they not here? Why are we not looking at options?
Well, the, the way we decided, and, and we could go a lot of different ways, but the way we decided to go forward was to take a look at the operation here and, and see if we could extend the contract. And I think the reason that the staff is recommending that is that we see progress compared to where we were last year, when we had this conversation about the operation of the conference center. Remember, there was a concern about cost overruns, and that's what prompted a conversation that we had with the management group at the time. We then rewrote the contract, put those loss limits in place. Mr. Owen has been, has been working, and we have been working with Mr. Owen the past year, and we're seeing those numbers in terms of the sales numbers going up, and we see progress. So, we, Mr. Wilderman talked about wanting to get a three-year contract extension. So, we thought it was to negotiate that first and, and bring that to city council, much like the conversation that you had with, with, with Matt Bernhardt about a professional service or a management company that, that they have. If, if that's not the one you want, then you would negotiate with another. There was something, as you recall, that we talked about, is, is going out and soliciting multiple and going through the process of different companies. And if that's, you know, the council directs us to do that, then that, that's a whole different process. Probably take six months to do that, I think, you know...
Why, why wasn't that started before? Like, like you mentioned, when, when you mentioned Mr. Bernhardt, they went out and solicited from several different companies and picked the best one.
I think...
Councilman Pierceall, if I could interrupt?
I was going to say, I think if we...
We're, we're, we're under a five-year agreement, so there were not any penalties to terminating the contract the last two years, but this is a replacement of an existing agreement. So, when you're renegotiating with your current contractor, it is a different situation than going out with a request for proposals for a brand-new person.
I get that point. I'm just saying, we're being asked to vote on something we don't have anything to compare it to. We, we, we don't know what options are. We're, well, maybe that, well, it could be, well, we can find out in six months, but you want us to vote right now? We don't even know what's out there.
I, you know, I, I think if we saw this group performing poorly, that we would have gone to that straight away. They are performing better, so we thought that we should bring this forward. There are other options, there are other companies. We know that, that the city, if the city wanted to go in that direction and, and go through a whole process and, and, and look at companies that are local, or look at companies that are in, in other locations, and there's certainly something we could do. I think if their performance had been poor, we, that's where we would have gone. Their performance has, has been better, and we, we see growth, and, and I think what Mr. Owen is doing is, is, is we see progress. So, that's why we brought it to you this way, but it's certainly in the hands of the city council to, to go forward in any direction you like.
I had one more, but you go ahead. You go ahead.
Go ahead, Doc.
The, the second one's more just a comment. I don't know that we can do anything about it. I noticed in, in Article 10, it stipulates that Bill Owen shall be assigned as general manager of the center as long as he's employed by the Wilderman Group. So, is that stating if he's no longer employed by the Wilderman Group, that they bring in their own manager? Because I, in personal experience with working in the conference center, would attribute pretty much all of the success to Mr. Owen, and I would like to see Mr. Owen stay there as long as he'd like to stay there, whether he was employed by the Wilderman Group or not, because I think he's the right man for the job in our city. So, I kind of don't like, as long as he's employed by the Wilderman Group, I'd like to say, as long as he's alive and wants to be there, but, and then, like I said, just kind of a comment as far as the, the job that I think Mr. Owen has done, and I think he deserves all that credit, and I'd like to see him stay there. And some kind, and, and I don't support a three-year extension. I will make that comment as well.
Mr. Gregg?
This dialogue is, is, you know, I think all of us have this mixed feelings about where we're going, but, and I, I have the same mixed feelings, okay? But at this point, I, I would have to say that, that I am in 150% agreement with exactly what you said, Councilman Pierceall, is that Bill Owens is the face of this conference center. He has developed the relationships. People know him now, and now it is beginning to get a little better. Is it where it needs to be? No, but he'll be the first one to tell you that. It's not. But if we're in the process, if the Gastonia Tourism Authority is in the process of hiring another, a salesperson for weekend heads-on-beds, and that's a new person coming in, and then if, if Mr., or we don't renew this contract, then we have a new manager at the conference center, then, then we've got new people who are trying to pick up the pieces. So, I, I don't like this contract 100%, okay? There's things in here that, that are, I don't think need to be in there, the three year. I don't think it ought to be an automatic three-year, okay? Automatic renewal. And so, I think there are some things in this contract that, that could be better. But we've got to do something to support the conference center. We got the conference center, we got the debt service, we're beginning to get some, some returns on that. The revenues are going up. So, you know, it, it, it's, it's a hard decision, it's a hard choice, but I'm not willing to kind of pull the rug out from under Mr. Owens for the, the time he's put in, and he's put in more than 40 hours a week, I am sure, okay? He's up there all the time, he's out there doing the right things, he's, he's developing these relationships, and that's what it all comes down to, is repeat business and relationships. So, I, if we can make a few changes in this, this agreement, then, then this contract, then I could support it with, with some disappointment, okay? Because we didn't have options that, that we should have had, but do we penalize because maybe we did not get what we should have gotten? And I would hope that, that that doesn't happen again. That's my say.
Your scenario, I concur with 100%, not, not just in this situation, but in any business. I mean, if it's trying and struggling, trying to get up there, not to break even and not to make money, but just trying to get up there, and you come and cut its legs off, it's not going to grow, it's not going to go back, and that's going to be, it's going to be sort of a, people asking people, running, running, running. The worst thing I've heard is, and this is not the first, the worst thing I've heard is the city, you know, we inherited this center, and I love the center now, but the, the city staff running it, that's about like the council running it, you know, in the kitchen, whatever, right? So, I think we, we're sort of on a roll, and this is a business, this is a tough business, and we owe money. But it's also, it's also a, a very attractive building, and good people, and good service, and good comments that are being made. Now, you know, this is not a perfect world, but I, I just don't, I have, we didn't hear any options, there are any options, and the city staff, they don't want to go in there and try to run it. I just, you've got to have people that know what you're doing, and, I mean, that, that's what they do, not part-time, not this, not, not just walk in. You've got to have someone that knows what... You've got to have someone that knows what's going on, as builders. Now, are we at a point, is there anyone got anything new they'd like to bring up, or who?
Yes, sir.
I think there's two points-
They're doing pretty well.
I think there's two points to this contract that could be negotiated, or you don't have to pass it at all, okay? The first is the management fee. I really do not think that Mr. Wilderman is earning $6,800 a month to manage this conference center, okay? And the reason I say that is if he makes one or two visits a month onsite, and then he spends some time on the phone, Mr. Owen's too busy to talk to him anyway, he's got too many things onsite to do. But the point is, is that it's $6,800 a month, you know, if Mr. Wilderman put 20 hours a month into that, he's making an hourly wage of $340 an hour, okay? Mr. Wilderman had the good fortune of having this contract renegotiated at this point in time without competition. That should be worth something right there. Why should we pay him the same $6,800, you know, today as we paid him yesterday, when he didn't have to do anything more to earn it than have Mr. Owen do a good job? Okay? So that's number one. I think his fee is negotiable. Number two is that incentive clause, because I think that's gonna come back to bite us before too long if Mr. Owen is successful at what he chooses to do. Now, I'll also say that in the case of Mr. Wilderman, it would not be fair to reduce his management fee, negotiate that anyway, and then have the same level of penalty on that cap at 180, 185, or whatever. So I think that needs to be negotiated, too, because you can't reduce his, and not, you know, give him a little wiggle room on that loss number. But maybe there's something that can be negotiated in there. And then finally, you know, I'm gonna say that the city and Mr. Owen have already been running this conference center, okay? So when you talk about, you know, the city running this conference center, they're already doing it with Mr. Owen. They take care of a monthly meeting with him. They take care of all the problems that occur. They're already doing it. So, you know, when you say, "This is not a good idea," no, I agree. It's not a good long-term idea. But if it had to be, that we had to run this conference center for six months until we put another plan together, that's a possibility, too. So there's a lot of things we can talk about. This is not a take-it-or-leave-at-night, personally. You wanna take it back to Facilities Management Committee and hash this out a little bit? That's an option, too. So, but in staff's defense, they did, I think, the right thing. They brought to us a negotiated contract based upon the current operator, because that was the first thing to do. And if it looked good and we accepted it, well, we move on. But if it doesn't look good, well, then we look at other options, you know? We do have to live with a situation for two to three years. So I think we should be smart, and I don't think it has to be decided tonight unless, you know, all parties here are in agreement to something.
I don't think this came before the Facility Committee. I'm not sure, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I'm not sure this contract came before the Facility Management Committee. It did not-
No, I know it didn't.
Right.
No, this hasn't been vetted through committee. I mean, you know, and justifiably, I think it's good that the council hears it all at the same time. So we're all putting into it at the same time.
Mr. Bridgen, let's have a vote.
Well, I'm just, just being-
No.
You call a question?
No, no, no.
But you can, I already-
I like what Dave says, you know? Basically, I believe we have three options with this. One, we have the contract in front of us. Two, we could bring this in-house. And if we're really bad at it, and we've been doing it as we've gone along as it is, then we can go out, it'll buy us some time to go out and find another management company. I'm like Dave, I don't feel comfortable paying somebody $6,800 a month to lose $185,000 for us. It just sounds ludicrous. I mean, I want someone to come in and say, "Yeah, I'm gonna hit a home run. I wanna do well. I'm gonna, this is what our company can do for you." But to come in and tell us, "Here's the contract. It's $6,800 a month, and we're gonna lose $185,000, and I don't even have a party." I mean, I could lose $185,000 and give me $6,800 a month. I mean, it just doesn't sound right. So I just wanna say we do have three options.
Okay, four?
No, I have to say-
You wanna call a question?
No, 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 there's no question.
There's a motion on the floor, so it doesn't need to be called.
That's right.
Do what?
There's no motion to call a question.
Well, he'd ask the question.
I just wanna see somebody wanna make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion. I don't know, this may go down in flames, but here we go. I'd like to make a motion that staff review this contract with the comments that have been made here tonight and renegotiate the terms.
Would you add into that that he would give us maybe another option, which I think he has?
Who? Who's who? He, Ed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They have no option. If there's a local person that would-
I would be glad to add that to the motion. So the motion would state that staff renegotiate this contract, bearing in mind the comments that have been made tonight, and also have an alternate plan that we can compare it to, and then we take a look at that.
Is there, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Discussion, Mr. Kimble.
Would you possibly consider re-
To add to your, to add to your motion, short and long-term to the word planning.
Sure. Short and long-term planning.
I think that's, I think that's vital when we look at this, when we look at this contract, both monetarily and in scope, that it needs to be on a short-term basis and also on a long-term basis. That's right.
And would, could you add, could you add a certain timeframe that this be brought back to the council?
30 days.
I don't mind putting a time limit on it, but I don't know what to project. I don't know what the Wilderman Group would need as far as an answer. I don't know what our staff needs as far as time to prepare.
30 days, this time next month.
We'll try to turn this around as quickly as we can, but part of this is a negotiation, so we'll have some discussion there. We'll look at some options, we'll put together some options for the council. So we'll try to turn that around and get it back to you as quickly as possible.
Can it be done in 30 days?
That would be as quick as you could possibly do it, I think, in 30 days. But we will see if we, you know, we'll-
Could we get a report in 30 days? And if you have something for us to actually look at and vote on, we will. If not, we'll hear a report and progress in 30 days. That's the motion.
You've agreed to that?
I've agreed to that.
A second act, amended, amended, and amended motion.
I think we have three amendments to it.
Let's vote.
All in, we are ready to vote, okay? All questions answered. All in favor? Your hand, please. Okay.
Go ahead, five minutes, bud.
Yes, sir. Good idea.
Or you can go ahead with this.
Watch it, watch it.
And then it's Todd, your own. And just five minutes.
And I'd like to go with the move along rapidly, item 11, Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee Report Presentation, Todd Pierceall, Chairman, Councilman.
Turn my microphone on. We're going to go rather quickly on this. There's a couple of items in here where I do have Myra, I almost called you messer again, Myra Nichols is present if council has any questions, but we've dealt with some of these items before, so they should be somewhat familiar. Item number one was the sale and rehabilitation of property to reinvestment in communities. It's 842 Million Street here in Gastonia. This is one of those situations where the reinvestment in community proposes to acquire, rehabilitate, and manage a three-bedroom house at 842 Million Street. It's owned by the city of Gastonia. It has been a rental for the city of Gastonia, and we don't like to be in the rental business, so this would provide an opportunity for affordable housing with reinvestment in communities. The committee did review this. Before I even go any further, I should say that unfortunately Councilman Kimball was not able to be at the committee meeting. He was attending to his wife, which was where he should have been. So you'll see that the committee voted unanimously two to zero to recommend approval for reinvestment in communities to acquire, rehabilitate, and manage the home at 842 Million Street. And I would like to make that in form of a motion that the council approve that as well.
Second, second half. Okay, discussion, all in favor?
One thing, one thing.
Yes, sir.
Is this putting it back on tax rolls? They're going to start paying property taxes?
It actually won't be on tax rolls because this is a nonprofit, but it assists with low-income placing families with affordable housing. I shouldn't say low-income, but affordable housing.
But it gets it out of our jurisdiction.
Correct. The city will no longer own the property.
Okay, questions? Red vote, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Jackson, go ahead.
Okay, and then item number two and item number three, I would be making a motion for both of those together. Item number three is dependent on item number two. So item number two is Family Services, Inc. of Gaston County has requested that they be designated as a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO, by the city for fiscal year 2014-15. This designation would allow them to apply for state home funds through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency and other funding sources to carry out housing activities and receive technical assistance from HUD-approved agencies. And obviously, they did, you know, meet the requirements necessary to do that. I will point out that Mayor Protem Craig sits on the board for Gaston Family Service, or Family Services, Inc. of Gaston County, and therefore recused herself from the vote, and since Mr. Kimball was not present, it did not seem, I don't know, prudent to send a one vote up to council, but it, a vote was not taken, but it did get recommended to a full vote of the council with my favorable opinion on it. So I would like to, well, let me go ahead and read number three first, so that we have it all. If we approve Family Services, Inc. of Gaston County, they have requested to rehabilitate and market a city-owned property located at 1001 West Circle in Gastonia. The property was a project for the city back in 2006, but the homeowner was unable to maintain ownership of the property, and the subject property was foreclosed upon in 2012, and the unit has been vacant since foreclosure with no immediate marketing plan or use. And under the terms of the agreement, the city would serve in the capacity of participating jurisdiction, and Family Services, Inc. will be designated as the CHODO. We felt this was also a good, I guess, remedy for this particular property that was owned by the city, so we are, or I am asking, or put in the form of a motion that we approve Family Services, Inc. of Gaston County to be a CHODO, and that we also approve the development, or the rehabilitation and marketing of the city-owned property located at 1001 West Circle in Gastonia.
One question.
Sure.
Yes, sir. We design, we allow nonprofits to be community housing development organizations? That's under our auspices? It's not from the state?
That's more of HUD, I believe, is it?
As a participating jurisdiction under the home program, we designate CHODOs to work with us. We put down 15 percent set aside each year that a CHODO has to use for a project, so we have the right to designate those.
How many designated community housing development organizations are there in Gastonia?
Currently, we have one, Reinvestment in Communities. We have had two in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask to be recused from this vote.
All right.
Again, Ms. Craig serves on that board.
You made a motion.
It was the form of a motion.
Oh, okay. Well, wait a minute. Do what? What'd you say?
I, two and three, I requested in the form of a motion.
But we're recusing. Is there a motion to, have we done?
I seconded his motion, Your Honor.
Do we have to recuse her first?
I think Ms. Craig would like a vote first on her recusal before the vote on the main motion, so.
I make a motion to recuse.
I second his motion on Mrs. Craig.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, now we're going.
Now we're back to the original motion.
The original motion.
That is correct, Your Honor.
Okay, sir. Questions? All in favor? Got it.
Okay, moving on to item number four. That deals with ideal applications. The first ideal application we had was Monique Kelly with Lenique Salon and Spa. It's located at 320 West Main Avenue. She's leased, Ms. Kelly is leasing the building, and she has opened a full-service unisex salon and spa, according to the financial statements. Provided, Ms. Kelly has invested approximately $74,000 in leaseholder improvements in equipment, and Ms. Kelly requested an UPFIT grant and an Architectural Services Grant. And per the ideal guidelines, she was eligible for $1,250 in Architectural Services Grant and a $12,000 UPFIT Grant. The committee voted unanimously two oh to recommend approval of an ideal grant for the UPFIT of Lenique Salon and Spa in the amount of $3,000. And then due to budgetary considerations, the Architectural Services Grant is not recommended at this time. However, the committee suggested the applicant resubmit the architectural grant request later in the fiscal year for reconsideration, and that was thinking that if we did have additional funds at the end of the year, certainly her project with her investment would warrant some additional funds. But at this time, I'd like to make the motion that the full council approved the ideal grant in the amount of $3,000 to the Monique Kelly, or Monique Kelly with Lenique Salon and Spa.
I will second, Your Honor.
Okay, questions? All in favor? Okay?
The second one we had was Chad Carpenter with Level Four Entertainment. Mr. Chad Carpenter is leasing the Dino's Building. I'm sure we're all familiar with that building, and has actually opened two businesses with plans to open a third in the future. One of the businesses is already in operation as a special events venue called 181 Main, and that fronts on Main Avenue. And Mr. Carpenter is requesting a facade grant to assist in the improvement he is doing on the Main Avenue side of the building for the events venue. However, Mr. Carpenter did not provide the required backup financial information and work estimates that should accompany the grant request. So for that reason, the committee continued this item until the applicant submits the required financial data and work estimates, and we will reconsider that application at its, our July 22 meeting. So that's more just informational purposes for the council. And then item number five is information only as well, and we discussed the availability of USDA loans for the first-time home buyers, and it was discussed with staff and committee, and staff is actually going to continue to research this item in an effort to create an equal grant opportunities in Gastonia, and that's in comparison to other regional entities. And for those that don't know what a USDA loan is, it's kind of like exactly what it sounds. It's the United States Department of Agriculture, and they provide a no-down payment loan in certain what is deemed a rural area. In Gaston County, the only area that is excluded or not considered rural would be the city limits of Gastonia. So as a realtor, Mr. Bridgeman may not have known about this, he does more commercial, but we've dealt with this for years and years now. Somebody qualifies for a USDA loan, the first thing they tell their realtor is, I need to see houses outside the city limits of Gastonia. And it really hurts the ability for us to market our city as a place to live. I mean, if they can move one mile outside the city limit and get a no-down payment loan, it's a no-brainer where they're going to buy. So it was our city manager, Mr. Munn's idea, to see if the city could research and work with state, federal, local money, come up with some type of grant program that would equal that, or be an equalizer to that program, so that if someone was interested in Gastonia, they could actually have the same benefits. We don't know where that's going to go, but, and that's informational purposes only, but I applaud Mr. Munn for even bringing that forward and looking at alternative ways that we can increase housing here in Gastonia. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Wait, you want to go on in? You want to go on into 11A?
Yes, sir.
Mayor of the council, the Gaston Building and Development Task Force had a request to modify the city's water and sewer.
Mr. Mayor, the Gaston Building and Development Task Force had a request to modify the city's water and sewer system expansion fees, and Mr. Bombardier and Mr. Munn were in extensive discussions with Mr. Gerald Sosby, who's the chairman of that group, and they've arrived at an agreement that they feel like would be fair to the city and to his group, and since Mr. Bombardier was directly involved in the discussion, Mr. Sosby, he would like, he would answer any questions in detail about that agreement. It was a vote of three oh on the Utilities Committee to approve.
Okay, questions of Mr. Bombardier? Then we have Mr. Sosby's letter put to this, also. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bombardier, this is something that those representing the builders and housing industry and staff came to agreement on, and everybody's in agreement on this, that it's fair and equitable to all the parties.
Yes, sir, it is, and Mayor and Council, Councilman McHattier is right. What this evolved from the development community in an effort to help promote, incentivize economic development, we have a lot of infill lots, a lot of subdivisions that were started during the economic downturn that are just sitting there. So that's kind of where this originated. So what we've tried to do is find a good balance that would promote economic development, and we'll have time to test this and see if it does, and in turn, try to find that balance with our water and sewer funds, so we don't put that at risk, find good stability on that, and be good fiscal stewards of that. So it's been a several-month process. I know it's been to both Utilities and Facilities Committee, and we've probably talked about it in other council work sessions as well, but we feel we've reached a good compromise, again, in an effort to promote economic growth.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Bombardier? Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, I was not privy to any of the conversations with this, but, so the short and the long term of this, you know, we're trying to keep from having to raise water and sewer fees. There's a certain impact on the system in a, you know, overall way as expansion occurs. That was the reason for the fees in the first, the system expansion fees in the first place. Is that not correct?
Correct.
Okay, we're trying to build, or we're trying to renovate a plant, but these reductions won't have impact on that.
Well, these particular fees go into a separate fund for specific capital improvements, whether it be the water treatment plant or other expansions, new lines, et cetera. While it could have an impact on the total amount of money we may be able to pull together in those funds, we hope that by reducing the fee, getting more development, that will help offset any additional loss, as well as new users on the system. That's more monthly fees we collect. We hope to find that balance between those.
How does our reduced fee structure compare to other surrounding communities that we compete with in the housing marketplace?
Our fee as it was was fairly competitive, as it is now, but I think the intent there was to, again, encourage people to come to Gastonia instead of somewhere else in the region. So we're probably below the regional average at this point, if this is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you, sir. Okay. That's everything, Porter, on that?
Oh, yeah, that's the same.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along here. Item 12, Citizen Committee Appointments Needed for 2014-2015, presentation by Mayor and the council members, and that is on exit 12, not much to it. So we narrowed it down to hopefully nothing tonight, do away with those appointments.
Yeah, Mr. Munn.
Well, I'm going to start with the farmers. I don't think that's okay.
Okay, I have, I had mentioned at the last council meeting that there could possibly be someone from the Thursday Rotary Club that's involved with the community garden that we have on Franklin Boulevard, and so I did ask around to see if anybody from there that would like to be appointed to this advisory board. And BF Beasley, who is local to Gastonia and has volunteered with a lot of different organizations, has said that he would be happy to serve in that capacity. And I see that it is just completing the infill term of Shannon Club, so I would put his name in nomination for BF Beasley to fill that unfilled position.
Okay, the name of BF Beasley for the Farmers Market Advisory Board.
Second.
Well, let's, are there any others?
Well, it's not a motion, it's a nomination.
It's not a motion.
It's a nomination, isn't it? I don't need to second.
Don't need to second. Are there any other names to be considered? Okay, well, the motion has been made, and let's vote, Ken, on BF Beasley. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now the, that's half of them, that's down to one. Planning Commission, three-year term, Ward Five, position currently held by David Kahler. Note, Mr. Kahler's interested to serve another term, and his attendance is good. Are there names to be considered, put in the nomination for three-year term to the Gastonian Planning Commission?
For Ward Five, my Ward Five appointment, Mr. Rodney Armstrong. I sent out a resume to everyone, a mail.
Okay, the name of Mr. Rodney Armstrong for the Planning Commission, three-year term, is, are there any other names to be put in the nomination for Planning Commission?
I would have one.
Okay.
David Kahler.
All right. Are there any other names that we can, should be submitted, or anyone wants to submit? If not, what we do, close it?
Close nominations.
Then call the names alphabetically.
We'll call, well, that's easy. Okay, is there a motion to close?
Second.
Okay, all right. All in favor of closing the nominations? Okay, let's vote now. This, okay, Mr. Rodney Armstrong is the first one, and then Mr. David Kahler. All in favor of Mr. Armstrong serve this term, raise your hand, please. Okay, and Mr. Kahler?
Well, that's it, four votes.
You've got one, too. All right.
You're right, Councilman McHattier, he's elected, but we still should call, we still should call the second name and complete the process.
Okay, okay, David Kahler is the other nominee. Now, I believe that Mr. Thompson set, I believe we have, Ash, don't we make, we pick the chairman?
Yes, sir, you appoint the chairman and the vice chairman of the Planning Commission by ordinance.
And Board of Adjustments, too?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Kahler.
Planning Commission elect to nominate Mr. Epstein to be the chairman.
Other names?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jim Stewart.
Okay, any other names? So far, we have the four chairmen of the Planning Commission, Mr. Mark Epstein, Dr. Mark Epstein, and Mr. Jim Stewart, right?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, how about a motion to close the nomination?
Second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
No, we didn't have to.
Do we discuss?
You can come if you want. If you'd like to.
Yeah, I had talked to Jim Stewart, he wasn't really in favor of being chairman. So, he was my ward appointment last year, so.
Well, didn't tell him.
You what?
He told me he would be willing to serve as chairman at breakfast Saturday morning.
I talked to him last night. Just to check, Porter, that's why I just called him to check.
Okay, anybody talk to him since last night?
I haven't.
Anybody what?
He said, had anyone talked to him since last night?
Because we have a Saturday, a last night, and then...
Can we text him?
Mr. Craig has...
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw is currently the vice chair.
Yes.
So I would, is it too late to put his name in for chairman, since he is the vice?
I heard a motion and a second to close nominations, but I didn't hear the mayor call the vote on it, because Councilman Gallagher asked him, can we discuss? And he started discussing. So it would be up to the chair to ask the motion and the second to withdraw, and allow Ms. Craig to put that third name in play.
Did y'all get that?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll withdraw the second. I don't know who made the motion.
On...
To close the nomination.
I did. I'll withdraw.
You'll withdraw? Yes, right, okay.
The motion.
Make your nomination.
Okay, I nominate the current vice chair, Jack Bradshaw, to move up to the chairmanship of the Planning Commission.
She can nominate two people?
Now, yeah, did you nominate Mr. Stewart?
I did.
Okay.
Oh, I have to withdraw?
Well, no, the rules say that you can, you can't nominate a second person unless everybody else on the councils that hasn't nominated somebody says that they don't want to nominate somebody.
I decline to nominate.
I decline to nominate.
The mayor can't, the mayor can't nominate, and...
I already nominated.
And you already nominated, so Mr. Curlin has nominated someone.
The point of question is, is Mr. Stewart no longer a nomination? Or we, have we added a third nomination?
I think you have Jim Stewart, Mark Epstein, isn't David Kahler automatically a nomination because?
No, he's not on the...
No?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have not withdrawn Mr. Stewart's name? We're adding a third name?
Okay.
I'm asking.
Yes, we're adding a third name.
Adding a third name.
Brenda?
I nominate.
I don't have a nomination.
I do not have a nomination.
You may make a nomination.
I, I would like to nominate the current vice chair of the City of Gastonia Planning Commission, Jack Bradshaw, to move up to the chairmanship, since the current chair will not be reappointed.
Do we do the vice chair at the same time?
No.
They do it?
No, you do the vice chair. You do the vice chair, but I would do that, I would do that after you resolve the issue of who the chair is.
Okay, all right. The, the motion is...
I will now make the motion to close nominations.
All right. That's, that's next. And is there a second to closing the nominations of three?
Second.
Okay. We, we have these three. Okay. All in favor?
So, can we, okay, to close the nominations?
Yeah, just close.
Now we're there.
Now.
We have more trouble with this.
For the, for the...
Can we discuss? Can we discuss before we vote? What do we discuss? I wanted to lobby for one of the candidates.
Yes.
Okay. I, I just, you know, this is what you call telegraphing your vote. You know?
I think from prior experience, just seeing Dr. Epstein come present to this group, and I think you need a good, strong chair who can just run a meeting well. And Dr. Epstein, I think, has got the experience because of his length on the commission. I think he's, he's fair, and I think he would do a good job at the job that that entails, and that is running a good meeting, letting all people, you know, have their say, and, and just running, running a tight ship. So that, that's why I would support Dr. Epstein's nomination.
Questions, sir?
Yes.
Councilman Gallagher, just to go back, you spoke, seriously, now, you, you spoke with Mr. Stewart last night, and he indicated he did not...
No interest.
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
Matter of fact, when I spoke to Mr. Stewart, I said, who, who would be a, a good person if this guy David Kaler doesn't get on there? And he suggested Mark Epstein. And that's why I'm nominating him, because Jim Stewart had recommended that he be it. He says he does a good job, just like Dave said. So, just want to let you know ahead of time.
Well, just, in case everyone doesn't know it, and this has nothing to do with who it is, but Dr. Epstein has, has been chairman, and Mr. Bradshaw has not. And undoubtedly, Mr. Stewart has not either, so. I think, Ash, we, we just can vote now?
Yes, sir. Name's alphabet.
Alphabetic. Well, Jack, Jack Bradshaw.
That's four?
As, as Porter says, that's it. But, but, as Ash says, go ahead and have... The, the next would be Dr. Mark Epstein. There's three, and then there's Mr. Stewart, didn't want it at breakfast. Okay, so, so it's four to three, and Jack Bradshaw will be the, the chair. Now, we're gonna move on quickly to the...
How about the vice chair?
They picked their own?
No, you do.
We do? Okay, vice chair.
Well, we want to let them recommend somebody and send it back to us? Like they usually do for a vice chair? How about Jim Stewart to be the vice chair?
How about, that's, that's the thing.
Well, ask the Planning Commission what they want to.
You can defer, you, you can defer to the Planning Commission and ask for a recommendation.
I think that's a fair thing.
You can.
Y'all do.
Yes, sir.
Y'all okay with it?
Yes, sir.
All right. The Board of Adjustment, I noticed that they made a recommendation of Board Member Donna McPhail remain as chairman, and Board Member Lee Taylor Jr. appointed as vice chairman. I assume that was their, their, their committee that did that. Okay. I'd now like to ask for a nomination for Board Member of the, of the Board of Adjustment.
I would like to nominate Michael Dixon.
Okay, Michael Dixon. Are there any other nominations?
Sir?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Don Grant.
Don Grant?
That's correct.
Okay. Any others?
Oh, mercy. I don't think Don wants it.
You do or don't?
No, no, I don't have anybody.
Oh, I thought so. All right. Now, they made a recommendation that Donna McPhail, that no one's bringing that name up. Okay. Any other nominations? Yes, sir?
I don't know personally if I would be the chair. Do you know that Donna wants to do it?
He said that if called upon, he would do so.
Okay, well, I will withdraw my nomination, because I have not called my... I know he served as well, although I'm not going to make him chairman, but I have not personally wanted to be chairman. So if you know someone that's willing to do it, I will withdraw my nomination, and let that be said.
He expressed to me that if he was appointed, he would serve in that capacity. Correct.
The chairman of the Board of Adjustment, Don Grant. All in favor? Okay. And we'll let them also, if that's okay with you.
Mr. Chairman, they have recommended that Lee Taylor Jr. be appointed vice chair, so.
I will make that nomination.
Okay, have, any other nominations? Okay. All in favor of Lee Taylor as vice chair? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
On the historic district commission at a previous meeting where we appointed Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
And we, and Ms. Craig seconded that. We also included in that that she would be, John Howard's going off, he's present chairman, that she would be the next chairman. She had told me she'd be glad to do that, and that Wade White would be the vice chairman. We already voted on that. If I remember correctly, am I right?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, I thought we did, too.
So that's what he settled. I don't know how that got back on here.
Do we need, do you need clarification for that?
That's number, okay. City Attorney's Report. No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Managers' Report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, right now, we have the auditors, and they're, they're gonna be looking at the close of the year operations for the city. Two things that we'll be looking for, we really won't find out till September. The sales tax won't really be given to us till mid-September, that fourth quarter sales tax, so we'll finally see where we ended our year. That's one piece. Then also, the county indicated that maybe as early as September, we will hear a preliminary idea about where the property tax might be for, for each city. So we'll see. I hope we can get that information by September, but those are two very big indicators that will tell us where we are. So, just to give you that information. Also, the Community Development Program was monitored last week. We had their monitor in all week long. They reported no findings, no management suggestions, everything is fine. They looked at two years of operations and documentation, and so we're good there. It was mentioned about our police department, and the sheriff's department, and some of the other municipalities, and how well they work together, and how important partnership is in law enforcement. And, and they're so right. Gastonia has really had that as a hallmark of what we try to do, is work collaboratively within the county, and also with Charlotte, and also with the federal and state officials. It's gonna be more and more of that as time goes on. And again, it was good to see the sheriff, it was good to see that collaboration. Also, it is my grandson's birthday today. He's an eleven-year-old Gastonian, and so I wanted to wish him a happy birthday, and then finally, go National League. Thank you.
That's right.
Is that all?
That's tonight, and All-Star game.
He's eleven today?
Yes.
What's his name?
What's his name? Right.
Well, I don't know if his, his name is Alex. Left-handed pitcher.
Alex.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I don't know his name.
They say, what's his name? You say, I don't know. Oh, wow, you don't know your grandson's name?
Alexander, Alex.
Okay. City Council Report, Ms. Craig.
Yes, I would like to thank everyone for the Fourth of July. It was a fantastic day downtown Gastonia. I talked to some people that were down there, downtown, enjoying it, and they said, this is just great. The weather was great, the attitudes were wonderful. I hope all you folks that were in the dunking booth got dunked a bunch, okay? I did not get in the dunking booth this year, but it, it was, and it was a well-planned-out event, and so I just thank everybody, the city staff, the police department, the fire department, and, and Councilman Pierceall, and, and his team that worked together. So it, it was something to, I think it's something that we can be very, very proud of. I also would just call your attention, I don't know if some of you saw it in the newspaper, but there was an editorial on the Optimus Park, okay? It was a fantastic editorial, and it basically talked about exactly what is happening, which is public-private partnerships, and working together for the betterment of the whole, and not for today or tomorrow, but for the future. So they did a great job. There was only one, one thing that they misquoted in there was, they, we had gotten $20,000 from the Glenn Foundation, not the Community Foundation, but it, it has come together, the staff, Rusty's Group, and Randy Bell's Group, and Gary Sein, and all those guys are doing a great job. We're looking for October as opening, so we will let you know when that, that date will be, but it, it's, it's coming together. It's coming together. That's my report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Don?
Just quickly, I, I would like to...
Oh.
Somebody move.
Do this every so often.
My move. There you go.
There we go.
In the dark again. Just very quickly, thank, thank everyone that participated July 4th. I will be submitting a, a more lengthy report with some specific thank yous and gratitude toward some, some people that participated and helped with that tremendously, but the city staff always does a wonderful job. We had a great crowd, good time. Councilman Kimball, Councilman Gallagher, and Councilwoman Craig all helped out with me this year, and I believe I wasn't there, but weren't you in the dunking booth again? Dr. Curlin?
No.
You didn't make it?
I was out of town, unfortunately.
Somebody asked me, I said, I, I wasn't even down there for the dunking booth.
Yeah, yeah. But I would have been if I was in town.
I, I will be bringing a, a larger or more extensive report on that, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have four items. One, the building with the crack on, 321, when is that gonna get knocked down?
Between York and Chester.
Yeah, the one we bought.
Lance Brenner building.
The one with the big crack in it.
Between York and Chester and the beach?
We have solicited bids for that and selected a low bidder. I will get you a schedule tomorrow, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. The other thing is, any update on the Irwin Pool? Has that been?
It opened about a week ago.
Great.
Yes.
Great. Third item, well, combined third item, fourth item. Two letters that I handed out to you that were drawn up by our illustrious lawyer, Ash Smith, and one is addressed to the Whitewater Center. I'd like to present that to the council in the form of a motion that we, we send this out to the Whitewater Center, alerting them that we would like, the next time someone comes up within this area that could be nominated to the board, that they select somebody from the council. I, myself, am not looking for that position. I'd rather someone else step forward for that. And the other one is, we already have somebody on the EDC board, and that is Mayor Pro Tem, Craig. Brenda's, has done a fine job, it's just that we do not have voting rights. And I believe that when they come to us and they ask us about the Technology Park and all, that we need to be not only at the table listening, but we also need to be having voting rights to find out, you know, that, you know, it's acceptable. I mean, we are spending the citizens' money in both of these places, and I think we need to have some representation. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, and...
Second.
See if we should send that out.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Did it? Doc?
Thank you, Mayor.
Doc?
I talked enough tonight, no reports.
Mr. Kim?
Thank you, sir. Two items. I, last evening, I was able to attend the Gaston County Missionary Baptist Association 35th Annual Banquet. The keynote speaker was Reverend Linda Inman, Women's Baptist Home and the Foreign Missionary Convention of North Carolina. And they gave out six scholarships to area young people that are gonna be going off to college. And what impressed me, the, the cumulative average of their GPAs was only slightly less than 4.0 for the six of them. That was fantastic. It was a good time. Secondly, Councilman Pierceall, great, great job you did on July 4th, and wife and I were down there a couple of times, and you know what was, what really shocked me, didn't, shock's not the right word, but it just was amazing. When we walked down the main street, and at one point, I said to my wife, is this the line for the one particular vendor selling food? I couldn't believe how long the lines were. Really good. I thought it was, everything worked out real well. Lastly, Ed, I spoke to you privately, we are making progress on Hunter, Hunter Lane. Want to just, we'll, we'll talk about that privately. We, we do have some violations, I believe, there. I know, I believe the resident there sent most of the council, or all the council photographs of what they believe were violations, and that, that has been substantiated by city staff, I believe, and we are taking some definitive action. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Ed, I, I think everybody has an Alex, and of course, our younger son, little bit older, he's eight feet tall. But we, you were talking about his birthday today is, is eleven, and being a Gastonia boy. We're fortunate to have six grandchildren, of which the oldest is eleven.
Wow.
About six days older than you are. And that was last, last Wednesday, and of course, he was born in New Jersey, and, but now lives in Florida. The, and then I had our anniversary the next day, so we were right together. I, I went over, I've never seen so many people in one gathering as, as the Friendship Christian Church. I spent several hours over there for the proclamation, and they were just around the building. I think the, the fire marshal, I'm sure, had to step in because it was just, it was their 25th anniversary of Bishop John McCullough. And that was just an absolute big crowd on Sunday, week ago, a couple weeks ago. Lastly, the, I was telling Ash that the mayor of Bellhaven, North Carolina, has gotten on this thing that they've closed a hospital down there, so he is going to walk from Bellhaven to Washington, D.C. And I just want to go and know if you hear that the mayor Gastonia is going with him. It ain't so. So, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? That do the old backing, right?
Right.